Good afternoon, the chairman of the council has sent a council meeting to order. I'd like to also bring in Mayor One who may be tuning in to P R W A three fourteen nine eleven. At this time, Councilwoman Jackson, if you would be so kind to us on the question.
Yes, sir, please, by his side, I would be grateful, Council President by the Reverend T. Frank Melchus, chapter of the Selma City Council of Selma, Alabama. Oh, God, forasmuch as without thee we are not able to please thee mercifully grant to the members of this city council the guidance and direction of the thy holy spirit, that we may consider thee approximately honestly and act rightfully in accordance with thy will for us on every matter that may come before us, knowing that without thy sustaining power we can do nothing, for we exist in the name of your son Jesus Christ and for his sake. Amen.
Amen.
Those thanks we pledge to thee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands our nation, our God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Boobey.
President.
Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson.
President.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Here.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw.
Here.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Ready.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
As stated before, we do have a call, the character trait of the man is resorted to this finding practically used for dead rich others with overlooked or destroyed. At this time, Councilmembers, you have a call, June twenty eighth, agenda, are there any corrections to base them?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
On item number four.
Okay. I'm, oh, we're talking about the record of the county.
Oh, oh, no.
Okay. All right. What's that? Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
By Councilwoman LaShaw, second by Councilwoman Benjamin, these are things. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Boobey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Okay, vote for the record of the gentleman who has passed the Madam Clerk. Councilmembers, you have a call, six items for the Senate agenda. I'm going to read all six items and any moment you would like to take out your mind for individual discussion in the matter. Consent item number one, to approve a legal statement in the amount of ten thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty cents. Consent item number two, to approve change of the supply department budget by four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars of captain improvement project for the advanced country dollar work, this by the five chief, concrete being posed, recurring across the street of five stations. Consent item number three, to approve the contract with Mr. Fitz, in the fifth person or seven, consent item number four, to approve the contract with Mr. Robert Walker at eight dollars fifty cents to work in the company building. Consent item number five, to approve the contract for Councilwoman Benjamin and Councilwoman Randolph to repair the pavements and pathways in the amount of forty-two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars in awards, forty-five, both funded from their gas and all of these funds was constructed during the job. And consent item number six, to approve the contract in the office of the clerk or secretary of the district for the election process and other duties needed in the clerk office for sending study by a weekly payment of ninety, nine hundred dollars weekly for six months. At this time, Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, I'd like to make a change here where consent item number four, it was supposed to been where our attorney, Gamble, was supposed to review this contract for ten dollars per hour for public work for Mr. Robert.
Ten dollars.
Does the contract say?
Does the contract say?
No, he's, he did the con, he didn't change the contract. We called him and he did, so we have to put this back because, uh, we have to talk with our attorney to make a change.
Eight fifty, I think it was just eight fifty, ten, ten dollars.
Yes.
Have you, have you made a provision?
Not yet, not yet. It was brought to my attention about an hour and a half, two hours.
Can we do number four pending the, uh, the change, the change from eight fifty to ten dollars?
I don't see why it would be a problem. That's, that's the only change.
All right, at this time, the chairman of the chamber motion to place all six items on the Senate agenda and vote. Do I have a motion on the floor? So, motion by Councilwoman Johnson, second by Councilwoman Benjamin. Roll call.
President Boobey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowleen, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson.
I vote yes on one, two, and three, as of saying four, five, and six.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw.
I vote no on item one, yes, on two, three, four, five, and six.
Councilwoman Thomas.
I vote yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
I'm going to have this stand out for the work session.
All right, the judge of the vote passed for the Senate agenda. Number down to announcements, are there any announcements in the award that you would like to bring forth at his side? And then I'll let you bring forth, uh, I'll sit with Senator Dr. Williams, uh, Senator Mr. Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman LaShaw, then Councilwoman Benjamin. With, with your announcements, please.
Yes, I would like to bring this announcement to the city of Selma. We will begin Thursday, we have two schools that are part of Auburn Day, which, uh, Mr. Denise Taylor will be backed down. The two schools are Knox Elementary and Payne Elementary. And out of this contest, we will be doing Thursday, selected three posters out of three schools there to be a part of the other state contests of other parts of Alabama. So, I just want people to know that our children in the city of Selma, they're being part of something that's good, to give them a chance to be a part of, to do a little traveling after this contest and be a part of this big event that we have, a part of Keep Alabama Beautiful. And also, we will be having a meeting this month, let me say, second week of February, on the Tuesday, awarding the first of this year.
That's it, Councilwoman. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes, Mr. President, as you very well know, a petition has been submitted to this council by residents of Cold Street, acknowledging and supporting the street name change from Cold to Ernest Hattin, who is the first African-American police chief in the city of Selma. To mod, to modulate the Alabama law that the legislature passed, and maybe long tonight close the streets, however, it does close monuments and buildings. With that being said, we have a public here, Mr. President, and we will approve the name change from Cold Street to Ernest Hattin.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman LaShaw, with a second by Councilwoman Thomas and Councilwoman Johnson. Discussion?
President Boobey, I have something on the mind I should have been looking for and
to tell the citizen in my ward, but I wish to ask the, Ms. Jackson, if she's listening.
I have to announce.
Uh, maybe, maybe I'll turn that for a second, I'm sorry. Did we get any clarification on the law, whether or not we get the law is actually legal?
Well, basically, from my understanding, I thought, trying to please my board, because I did ask them to look into it.
Right here.
Yes, I hear you. President Boobey, Councilmembers.
Good evening.
To my time, Treasury Secretary, my closer, our own.
I'm there, pick up.
I need to hold, turn it off first.
Yeah, go look at the box.
I want to use a better, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I was asked last night at the work session to read and review the Alabama Memorial Preservation Act of twenty seventeen, which some individuals believe apparently would be applicable to the action the council has contemplated. That act created a law which says that there's a prohibition on the relocation, removal, alteration, renaming, or other disturbance of any architecturally significant building, memorial building, memorial street, or monument located on public property which has been in place for forty or more years. I'm not going to read this whole act to you because most of you don't want to hear it, they probably wouldn't, will be turning back to me asking a bunch more questions anyway. The act specifically does name streets, but it says memorial streets. Now, I see nowhere in the act a definition of memorial street. What's an architectural building or memorial building or monument located on public property which has been in place for forty years or more, less difficult issue to define that what a memorial street is. A memorial street depends on what happened when the street was named. So, you'd have to have somebody tell you how Cold Street got named to begin with, to consider the memorial street. There is a place, by the way, in the act to do just that. The act calls for a commission to hear the propriety of a change by either the state or municipal political subdivision, including a municipality. That is a place to contact the commission. And information can then be provided to the commission as to whether or not that street indeed should be presumed to be a memorial street. But you are going to need some sort of tangible historical documentation, I would think, to say this is a memorial street, or any other street, not, not just Cold Street, any other street. Every street is named after something, someone, somebody, but the question is, why? And I can't answer that, and I don't think anybody else here can answer that right now either.
Councilwoman.
Yes, ma'am.
So, you, you can start off by stating my position, for honorary chief date, there's no doubt about that, and would love to do it in this manner. However, I would like to, before you have more time, to contact the commission to determine if this is something we could do, because if we do it, and then they contact us and say we were wrong, and we have been fined, and we have to change it back.
That's twenty-five thousand dollars fine.
Oh, twenty-five thousand dollars, okay. And so, if we delay it two weeks, for you to have that opportunity and then?
I would love an opportunity, and I'm going to seek the assistance of anyone in buildings and grounds about how the street got named, if we can find it. It may not be impossible to find out how the street got named.
And if they can give us something great, I mean, I don't know that this is my colleague's item, and I don't want to presume to take control of it, but what I am saying is this, the clarity on the matter will precede my vote.
The councilwoman LaShaw was one of the people who specifically asked me to do this research, I claim to conclude in this.
If my knowledge, Cold is not a memorial street. My knowledge, nobody's business today, even know how that street was named. I would concur if Cold Street was designated a memorial street, that we should hold up. But being that it, it isn't, I'm going to ask my, my colleagues to move forward on the name change of Cold Street, and whatever comes out of that, so be it.
As is your right, Council. All right, and this is second time, all right, Councilwoman.
I just want to ask you, what is your recommendation to the council, your legal position? Because I thought you just said?
My legal position is partly, partly determined based upon what I said a few minutes ago. I don't know who can determine whether or not that was a name, as a memorial street name. I don't know where I would go to find that out for sure. I would only start with whatever public works or information or historical data there is. But, but how do you find out how every street in Selma got its name?
Right, and so, the, what you said was there, is there a commission or someone you can contact? I thought?
No, 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 there is a commission that you can go to with a request to review whether or not action you're, you're determined to take will result in a fine.
Wouldn't it be, I mean, wouldn't it be proactive?
Proven.
Prudent and then get judgment to go to them first rather than ask for forgiveness afterwards?
My considered opinion is that it would not hurt at all to contact the mission. But Councilwoman LaShaw is the proponent of this, this, uh, this, this, this act, and I don't want to take that again.
I ask for the permission to be called.
Okay, all right, any other, the firm, comments?
And, and Councilwoman LaShaw, in the meantime, it's not like you're buying signs tomorrow. In the meantime, you can find all that.
Absolutely.
All right, roll call.
President Boobey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bowleen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson.
At this time, I would say no, based on the fact we, we don't have permission, we have research, and we're not being proven.
Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yes, at, at the information given to us by Councilwoman LaShaw, and at the information given to us by the attorney, and also at the advice that Councilwoman LaShaw has time to go find out that information before signs are purchased. Yes.
Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman LaShaw.
Yes, Mr. President, I want to thank my colleagues, and there's one, oh, a man that has given thirty-four years of his life to serve for this city, and has achieved a major mark, has been the first captain of the army for police chief here in the city of Selma. But that not only, yes, I'm glad to cast that vote for Chief Artis, P R W A.
Councilwoman Thomas.
I want to vote on, based on what I just heard the attorney say, that, that no one can say who this street was named, Cold Street, nowhere names.
I said I don't know who can say. I can't say no one can say, I don't know who can say.
Who can say. So, I will, I will vote on yes.
Yes.
Yes. That's what I said, yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
All right, a vote passed by majority.
She was here.
Councilwoman Benjamin, I think you have some announcements?
I do.
You will, okay, okay. I do, I do, I do. All right, the eleventh annual Black Man Hills Symposium, and I may have that annual number wrong, and I meant to give you the dates for this, Mr. President, so I can put it up, it's coming up in February, I have the dates on the next agenda, but just, just be prepared for this. Madam, superintendent, the young people from Selma City Schools always attend, it's a valuable, valuable training table for them, it's the eleventh annual, and we cover a gamut of topics for our young men in Selma, Alabama. So, this is the eleventh annual Black Man Hills Symposium. The twelfth annual Black History Month celebration will come right after that, and I'll have the dates, I'll have the dates for you on the next agenda, Mr. President. Also, Mr. President, because, you know, I have a copy, and I can't get that copies on yesterday concerning public, public works bidding and public work projects, I wanted to read to this because we had a, we have a contract on the Senate agenda that had questions that it got to me, there were questions. Because public works projects are specifically exempt from the regular bid law in Title Forty-one, public work projects involving expenditures of less than fifty thousand dollars do not have to be bid. For those of you who would like a copy of this, or you can have my copy, you are welcome to. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other announcements, please? Councilman.
Yeah, I'd just like to announce that the February award meeting, Ward Eight, on February, wherever the eighteen and five P M. at Kingston Elementary School, February eighteen and five P M. at Kingston.
Thank you, sir.
Talked with potholes in the garbage.
Councilwoman Thomas, then, Councilwoman LaShaw.
I would like to make this announcement to the citizen in Ward Seven. I diligently do what the citizen in Ward Seven calling me to, but I want the citizen in Ward Seven to know that we know we have potholes, and we know that we have to repair them, but I want to let them know, I've been riding today, these are some major problems I know that we have, but it takes money, and I just want, uh, specific to let them know that I am beginning to do a contract where some major potholes are coming up or abroad, entering into some of the residents, they are, they, they seriously need to be fixed, which I will be starting on them next week. So, I want people to know that I hear you, I don't avoid your calls, I take your calls and I go out, and I will continue to do as I was served and elected to do, to take care of the, the area over there, so I want people to understand, it takes time and it takes money, and we don't have that much, but I am going to take care of that, that's a major problem in my area that I need to address.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Councilwoman LaShaw, then we'll move on to Dr. Williams.
Yes, my friend, I really, yeah, bring this up, you know, I spoke about it in the work session. You know, we, we all agree that littering was a major problem in our city. We all agree that this indiscriminate garbage problem by our citizens has to be stopped, and we're gonna, I think we had a consensus that we're gonna declare war on these people that are littering, as the city of Birmingham has done. And I read a copy of the Birmingham news when they launched a campaign for anti-littering. This, this, this littering problem in our city has to be eradicated, Mr. President. It's gonna create a serious health problem. People will have to realize that they cannot just take their house and garbage from their homestead and just ride around the city and see nobody's looking and just dump it. We're gonna have to just let our citizens know that there are some consequences to their actions, so I'm asking that the city of Selma declare war on the litterers, and I think it was.
It's me. He'll be back in a split.
I thought I heard you say you was going to have a resolution to that effect.
Was that that?
For the war on litter.
Yeah.
There will be a resolution to that effect, and we will do public service announcement, letting our citizens know that, one, what they're doing is not going to be tolerated anymore, two, what they're doing is criminal activities, and they are consequences to their actions, and we're gonna encourage citizens to report what they see. And we're gonna talk with the new police chief, and we're gonna have a, a, a resolution where people are gonna have to pay for their duties. So, once again, the decision of ours, the city of Selma, is not gonna tolerate indiscriminately dumping, dumping any law, there's consequences to your action, and be aware, beware of that.
Thank you, Councilwoman LaShaw. Councilwoman Thomas.
Yes, I want to speak on behalf of that. The city of Selma, though, I have been talking about this, what he's just not bringing up by Birmingham. I have brought this before, this panel here, that, that I have requested that we do in resolution of our ordinance, because this panel must realize that we have, we have council people have dedicated and, and been certified to represent the city of Selma on keeping Selma clean. We didn't just start, this has been going on two years, I have been a part of Keep Alabama Clean, and for many, for the last two years, we have dedicated, and the citizens of Selma, and a lot of the schools have dedicated theirself to being a part of this. We didn't just start yesterday, this is our third year, and I brought this before, this council before, and I just want to say that I get ideas with these groups, and we work in this community, and our city, we do need to have an ordinary resolution about littering, which we do have orders on the book, there was placed, but I, I'm speaking because of me, of, of what my colleague, Councilwoman LaShaw, just said, but I brought this months before this, this panel, which I have served this city of Selma on my own volunteer time. You don't get paid for this, this is volunteer, and when the work is done, I think that we may, our city be a part of Keep Alabama Beautiful, and I did put it to the flow before Councilwoman LaShaw brought this about Birmingham. We have people that have been working diligently out here, trying to keep the city clean.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Councilman Johnson, then, Dr. Williams.
Real quick, Mr. President, um, do the county have some kind of law in place about the garbage, if they're mandatory, was that the garbage? Because I asked that, because like I said, on last week, I did find, I caught someone coming from Randolph, bringing garbage into our city, and as well as Ford during that last demonstration on Ray Street, I, I was there, kept some people around in that curb on Ray Street, like five big bags of garbage in the home, in race in that curb, and they came from the county. Also, we declared, well, we definitely need to be able to get the code enforcement back out of there. We need code enforcement workers back, and I don't know where we at with that, if we plan on hiring any of the code enforcement back, but we definitely need somebody to hit these spots. We had spoken with the mayor about that.
I talked to Chief Hope from the latest night, he had hired, I think, four, April thirty-five officer, and I asked him, would you put the code enforcement back in the police department, and he said, no.
Also, in Mobile, and I brought a ticket, you know, I brought a ticket, I'm not sure with this demonstration, last demonstration, well, Mobile have a litter officer go by, and even it's on a lot, they see trash, garbage on a lot, they find, they give so many days to get back out of trouble, nah, they gonna find whoever's laying on it, so that's something we may look at as well, but, uh, well, they put it on a lot of that, you know, they're still responsible, and I had a ticket I brought before the council, what Mobile did, so that's something we need to look at, man, so we're gonna do it, we got to do it all.
Yeah, but I think they can take the police.
That's right, I ain't no problem with that.
Yes.
Right, that's, that's not gonna do it, my good friend.
All right, Dr. Williams, please come forward.
All right, good evening, good afternoon, or good evening. Happy New Year, I haven't seen most of you guys since, I haven't seen y'all here, first time seeing you this decade, so happy to be here representing Selma City Schools, and just really wanted to share a little bit of the goings-on for Selma City Schools, and as always, encourage you to, to be involved with us. So, you've got two different sheets that's coming around, the first one is called Keeping Up with Selma City Schools, which is our newsletter, and I'm gonna go over that first. The second one is, is just information about where to find us on social media, and including our sports teams, our clubs, and so forth, that may have Twitter and Facebook accounts. So, Keeping Up with Selma City Schools, we are in the process of looking for school bus drivers, we're very interested in expanding our bus transportation, but in order to do that, we have to have drivers, so if you all know of any, and including our, our listening audience here, if you know of anyone who has their C D L. and is interested in driving a bus, please have them reach out to us, and the information is on our website, that includes the qualifications for being a school bus driver. Also, January is Board, School Board Appreciation Month, and I do thank our school board for their hard work and dedication, and much like the work that you all do, they, they work hard as volunteers and really have a large impact on the work that we're able to get done, and I definitely appreciate our school board, and I encourage you all, if you have an opportunity to say thank you to our school board members, please do so. It's time for pre-K registration again. This time seems to roll around rather quickly, but registration did begin on January fifteenth, and that information is also on our website, so any families out there that have a little one turning four by this fall, please join us with pre-K, and Ms. Cheryl Randolph is our early and social emotional learning coordinator, she can give additional information, but the application itself is on our website, so we would like to get as many folks registered early as possible for pre-K. So, great news to share about our scholars, we had a number of our scholars participate in the Congressional App Challenge, and this is Congresswoman Sewell's District Seven Congressional App Challenge. Last year, we had a team that won first place. This year, we had, I think, ten or eleven teams to participate, and we swept. This year, we had, I think, ten or eleven teams to participate and we swept it. We won first, second, and third place in the Congressional App Challenge. And so, yeah. We are super, super, super excited about the work that's happening at RB Hudson Steam Academy as well as our other schools. Invite you all to come take a look at it. If you ever want a tour or just to walk around, please let me know because I would be more than happy to host a school visit with you all. So congratulations to those scholars. First place was Jada Wells with the Bulldog Alert. Second place was Alexis Perry with Classroom One-on-One. Third place was Ashton Young with Selma Tourism App. And these are all usable apps. So these scholars were actually coding, programming, and creating apps that are actually usable and needed in terms of getting information. Also, you may have seen some of our scholars from the Steam Academy at the Maxi Street mural painting. We had a paint party there a week or so ago. Really excited to see how we're beautifying that side of town in Selma. It's gonna be beautiful. And our scholars actually designed the artwork and they've got artists who are working closely with them in partnership with Arts Revive and Cougar Oil, the Links Incorporated, and just to make sure that it is a community effort. And we really look forward to having an opportunity to beautify the city in other ways as well. So this, this is something that I hope will be the start of something that's ongoing for our scholars to play that role within our city. Samaritan's Feet was here last week and this was our third shoe distribution, one of my absolute favorite times of the year, where this organization out of Charlotte, North Carolina comes and basically gifts our young people with a clean pair of socks, new pair of socks and new pair of shoes. And during the process of it, we greet our, our young people, take off their socks and shoes, wash their feet, and then put on clean socks and shoes. And at the same time, having conversation with them, you know, learning a little bit about what they like about school, what their favorite subject is. And it's always just a, a time where I just get real joy in my heart just to see how excited they are about getting their new shoes. And we did this for all of our kindergarten and first graders throughout the entire district. One upcoming event that I want to announce is our Family Engagement Night. This will take place on February twenty-fourth at Selma High School. And this will be an opportunity for families to learn more about what's happening in our schools, specifically the new assessment that we have this spring. And also the Literacy Act that was passed by the legislators earlier, well, last session. And just a time to really get engaged about what's happening and what's needed within our schools. We'll share information about our Academies of Academic Excellence and volunteer opportunities and that type of thing. Now, we were going to have it on the twenty-fifth, but that's a council meeting and I had to strongarm my people because I told them I'm inviting the city council. And so we changed the date to Monday, the twenty-fourth. And I know you guys have work sessions usually then too, but we hope that you'll be able to make it for at least part of it on that evening. And if not, please share the information within your wards because we definitely want to have as many parents and family members there as possible so that we can share all that's happening and the things that we're needing from the community for Selma City Schools. And that's all that I have. And if you all have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy.
Thank you so much. Dr. Williams, thank you so much for coming and committing to this, first of all, this month and before. I appreciate it. I appreciate the information and the partnership. The bus drivers that you're needing, you're adding transportation. I don't know if you started yet, but I started seeing a lot of buses, more buses.
We have a lot of buses that are running because of either our special needs babies or just because of high needs. We have families that are in crisis that we may provide transportation. And we've had more families this year that needed emergency transportation.
Okay. Thank you, because I'm seeing more buses now. So I do appreciate it. If someone, well, they can't tell me if the radio is on because they can't hear me. But I got a text message that the radio is not on and the news is on. So let me know what Randy says, because this is good information. So thank you for the transportation piece. The School Board Recognition Month is, have you had all your, in comes the radio man. Have you had all your programs for this month for, have you had all your? Have you had all your programs for this month for the school board?
Well, we recognized them at our, at our January board meeting because our, our big time to have them together to recognize them. But the month doesn't end until Friday. And I don't think any of them will be mad if it eases into February. So if you get an opportunity to thank them, just send them a note or anything like that. I would really appreciate it.
I think we need to go ahead and move forward with the resolution. Shona, I appreciate that.
Selma has my adopted school. You know, I came to the institute last spring, the teachers institute. I'm not a teacher, but I love crashing parties.
Hey, welcome to this.
It was a good, it was a good event. And that is when I adopted Selma High School and I thank you all for the institute. The principal and I are working on several things. One of the things we're working on and, and I know that I'll have your staff approve really quickly when it comes across your desk, is workshop sessions and seminars for partnering with the U.S. Attorney's Office, who will supply the funding for this and some of the human resources for this. At Selma High School and, because that's the school I adopted. Also, coming across your desk will be an application we paid for. My teenager who just graduated and made from there, come out, you know, come out.
Yes.
Who harassed you in your office until you made a policy change.
Hey, he was, he wasn't wrong.
He was there every day in your office until you made a policy change because of a teenager. Well, he wants to come back over there and teach concerning entrepreneur technology.
Oh, that is awesome.
It'll come across your desk, I guess, this week or next week. So if you all would please give that kind consideration.
Absolutely. We, we love having our, our recent graduates come back. That's a great thing.
Okay. So that'll be across your desk in the future. The app winners, the three app winners, can you bring them back? Can you bring them to council meeting? Not back, but can you bring them to council meeting?
Sure.
We recognize basketball, football, baseball. We recognize all those things.
Yeah.
We would also like to recognize those who are in technology.
We would appreciate that, absolutely.
So if you would, we'd like to recognize.
Absolutely.
Counselor, is that okay? I'm saying we.
Yes.
Okay. Foot washing, the foot washing we did with the children, that is, that is something to say about the teachers and the staff to take off the shoes and the socks of children and then wash their feet.
Absolutely.
We all know it's also spiritual.
Absolutely.
So thank you all for that, for doing that to and for children. I do appreciate that. So thank you.
Councilwoman Schor, then Councilwoman Thomas.
Dr. Williams, I want to thank you for this information. I think the council know more about the school than we ever in the past. This, this call updates is very helpful to me. Just as I adopted Selma, I talked to my colleague this morning. She and I both about Selma High, you know, she did for one reason and did for another. The reason I did was Austin Proctor was a young man that came up on the tubes and I think he was doing a remarkable job.
Absolutely.
And I just want to thank you for all this information.
Thank you. I appreciate your support.
All right. Councilwoman, that's, I mean, Councilwoman Thomas, I think it will move on.
Dr. Williams, I want to thank you for, for such a wonderful job that the school is doing. I have two schools I have got. I have Dr. RB Hudson High in Knox.
Okay, good.
Because both of those schools are in my ward and a lot of those kids have had great turnaround with programs at RB Hudson, which I have been going. I, I love the way, yes, the way it's been set up and it, it helps a lot of those, those children out. And y'all put a lot of time in with them. And over at Knox, I just love Dr. Curtis.
Yes. And they're excited about they started with performing arts.
Yes. She, the kids are very excited. I go to both of them and I see the improvement. I see what's going on and I, I stay connected with those two schools because, you know, Ms. Curtis has turned, she's turning RB Hudson around. She's changing those kids because there's so much love and passion that she's given them that some of them haven't had.
Yeah.
And she puts in time and, and some of them go through some things and I like where y'all set up. And you get a chance, the kids get a chance to be open.
Yes.
They get a chance to discuss about what's on their mind, what they're going through. And I think that is a good thing that is happening. And I think that RB Hudson will strive for the best because it has been turnaround.
We are making improvements within the right direction.
I see it. I see it. I see it in the kids every day, getting out of school, personality and the fights they used to do. They don't do it anymore. And the little kids at Knox, all the new changes that are coming over there. The kids and the parents, they're, they're excited.
Good. I can hear that.
Yes. I see in those two schools over there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you for your support.
Real quick, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Now, the way I'm saying was what you adopted, the year ago, I talked to the council in Kingston.
And they still are.
That's what, that's what I want to go. And also, since they're talking about adopting, I got three schools that I adopted, which is Clog, School Discovered, and Kingston.
Okay, awesome.
We all were here trying to give, to help out.
We really appreciate that. That, that support means so much. And you know, anytime you guys want to visit your adopted schools or any of the other ones, please, please make yourself at home. And yes, the YMCA is doing step up this year again and we're of course alternating between all of our elementary schools. So it started up in the fall.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And also we're gonna have some looking for.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Citizens request. Oh, Mrs. Spenson, please come forward.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Howard Spencer, Mayor Howard Spencer, and I'm a new resident here and citizen. And I'm six oh seven Union Street. And I have been really happy to participate in cleaning up and around the neighborhood and looking forward to working with the council. My, my main concern was about Bird Elementary School. I've met several people walking and entering that place outside that came from other states that came in for reunions and were interested in what was gonna happen to Bird. I've approached some people with the superintendent, Mr. Patterson, and they're trying to turn this over, I think, to the city council. And I've talked with other people and I wanted to show an interest in that school. I wanted to know where we'd be with Bird and when it would be coming over to you. My wife and I have a place over in, for pottery, does pottery in Georgia. And they went ahead and used the whole school for pottery and arts and everything. So it wouldn't be closed where people could use and drop stuff off and, and like there's always, there's already couches and everything behind there. There's already trash building up. I check the air conditioners every day, make sure they're not being missing. And I just was coming towards, towards the council to see if there was anything coming up on the agenda that the superintendent has turned over, or to you, and will you have any other meetings on that?
Well, I'm glad you asked. They have a meeting tomorrow at eight thirty to discuss Bird School and also City Park.
Is that open to the public or is that just to, to council?
It's a, it's a school meeting. It's our project. I mean, it's, it's not a public meeting. It's just a meeting to discuss facilities and make some decisions about how we would walk over facilities. And that's just one of the items that's on the agenda.
So that's one of the items. Okay. That's what I was coming forward today to ask you about.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
Don't leave yet. Those, those items, just FYI, those items have been on the agenda for a while on the discussion table for quite some time. And even with the transition process from the school board to the city council. When they closed the school, the schools reverted back. And I know this because of several reasons. One of the schools mentioned is in workforce, but for other reasons too. The schools reverted back already. You may have missed it.
It's already reverted back?
To the city.
Okay.
Once the school board voted to close those schools and not use them for an educational facility, they reverted back. That's been some time. You may not have even been living in Selma at that time. So you missed it. So just FYI, that's been on the discussion table for quite some time. And you'll probably get an update from the meeting on tomorrow from one of us. If I'm not there, Councilwoman Jackson, I know will be there. And Councilwoman Thomas was invited on last night to attend if I can't make it. And so that, you'll get some details from that concerning that. And look, this, the school that you're talking about most is in Ward Three and there's been deep, deep discussion on that school about investors.
Okay. Thank you for so much. I, I just need to know that I talked to Ms. Jackson about how we're interested in taking over that school.
Okay. And I was going to relay that information, Mr. Spencer, that I may be aware of that it is not in our possession. We haven't taken keys. We are not, though it has reverted back. At last I spoke with the attorneys in December. It had not been turned back over to us. And I did speak with Attorney Woody Jones right before they were, their contract was still closed. And he stated that they were going to look into the management. I'll be present at the meeting tomorrow. Mr. President may be aware of last evening. And so I have your name and number. I'll give you a call and let you know any information. But we do have several investors that are looking into it and you want to, and I'll make all of you all aware tomorrow.
Thank you, Senator Thomas. Any other question?
Any other question? All right. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Good afternoon, City Council.
Good afternoon.
I'm gonna not be too long. I have Ray Hogg up here. This is information which I'm gonna pass you all out is regarding the KBN of the Riverfront Park. And I know you all wanted to have some information in regards to what the situation was down there and coming up with the remedy in regards to trying to proceed with moving forward in regards to getting this taken care of. And I will let Ray come on and speak. See you all on that matter.
I'm gonna use the microphone here. Oh, y'all look on the second two pages of pictures that I took with my drum. And I'm not an expert on anything. I won't crash it twice. Anyway, that, the pictures were, the aerial, the first one was an aerial photo taken January the tenth. I think the second page is I flew that drum down into the hole down there. And I'm mighty brave to do that. I can tell you right now. Where I got the red arrow, this is the big red arrow. Y'all will look, there's something I've never seen in Selma. This is my fortieth year being an engineer here in this city. We have the underground tunnels and they were probably put in in the eighteen nineties to help with the yellow fever epidemic. But their, their sides are straight up brick and then they're arched on the top. This is a perfectly round, it almost looks like a pipe that is made out of brick. I've never seen that. It's about forty-eight inches in diameter. I took a drum up this afternoon and I got a photo here that I took to see if the hole had gotten any worse in the past eighteen days. It hadn't gotten very much worse. And I know you took a video or something of it the other day. It's been like that since January the tenth that I'm, that I'm aware of. What, what we've given you is a cost estimate to come in and we'd have to replace, I'm estimating about a hundred feet of that underground drainage structure. And it's a, I had to make an assumption because I wasn't gonna get down in that hole and measure it. But it looks like it's about forty-eight inch pipe. And what we would do is put a man, basically a manhole on each end and then replace that pipe. We're also gonna have to replace those stairs that go down there. If y'all have been, if y'all have been down there, they're not following the hole down. And you've got some lights and some wires, like you got a wire dangling down in the hole now and some lights. We might have to take them, put those, remove them, do the work and then put them back. And then we're gonna have to fill it in, plant some brass. I may end up putting some riff raff down there if y'all wanna do that. Hundred and ten thousand, two hundred dollars. That, that obviously includes the engineering. I know in the past, previous administration, sometimes we would use, I see this way here, the, what is that called? The gasoline tax monies. I think that's what y'all call it. And the attorney, who's now a judge, there's none of the city attorney, he would always give me a wide load and he would look at it. If it was drainage under the street, it was eligible to be used in those funds. I'm just gonna make that point. I know y'all, if you gotta spend that kind of money, you gotta figure out where it's coming from. I don't know where you got it. I don't know where you got it.
I don't know, I was also, how about in your tourism account? Tourism account? Well, I'm gonna get with, uh, this way and find exactly how much, I know we have a lot of obligations under the tourism, so we may not be able to utilize and cover the total amount, but it should be a portion, it should be able to be matched.
We'll, we'll come back to that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Benjamin.
Thank you, there was one reason my hand was up, it was about planning the development, it's here, so I'm glad to see you. Uh, it was about the tourism account, that was one of the reasons why. Um, uh, Mr. Hall, I visited this hole the first time you visited this hole.
Yeah.
Which I think was last summer or last spring.
Yeah, I can make a picture of it, I didn't have my phone.
Yeah, so I heard about it, and I, I wanted to come see for myself, somebody was like, there's a tunnel under there and it's falling in, and I had to go see, uh, for myself. It wasn't as large as this is now.
No, I'm not here.
Uh, not that then, so to, to you, Mr. Thompson, and to you, uh, our engineer, that was some time ago. And the longer we wait, this may get larger, and this amount of money may, may double. This was last summer or spring when I was out there.
Yeah.
And so here we are now, some months and months later, we're into, uh, we're almost in the spring again. So this is getting bigger and bigger, it was not like this when I was, I was able to go down the steps and peek in.
I wouldn't want me to say it right now.
No, right, so it's got, it's gotten worse, we can't, we can't keep waiting on cave-ins. We can't keep waiting on cave-ins to happen to, to fix this stuff, so bottom line, Mr. Hall, I saw all this and I see all your writing. When do we need to start on this, and, and Madam Treger is gonna tell us where to find the money?
I'm just, we, you can get started right away, um, it's over fifty thousand dollars obviously, so you gotta be there now.
Finally, uh, everybody who, who can work on this is in place and ready, is what you're saying?
Well, you have to, we have to draw up the drawings and set a set of specifications and bid documents to make sure everybody's beating on the same thing.
Okay.
That can be done, that can be done real quick.
Okay.
Councilman, the children, the councilwoman, this is, this is a good example, as to put gasoline taxes used for issues such as this. And I think there was a rush to divide the gasoline taxes, because, uh, it was perceived that councilpeople would use it all up, and we all had similar problems with that war. I've learned, don't lie, it reverted back, the division of gasoline taxes, take care of this, this is a major problem. And I think it would not be a major problem if any councilpeople supported that initiative to take care of this. And this way, if you could tell us what's in the gasoline, the balance of the gasoline, I was thinking, twenty-four, maybe thirty thousand, my colleague and I were separate.
No, I, I didn't use that.
Hello, hello, hello.
So what's the balance of the gasoline taxes?
The, the cash balance?
Yes.
I can tell you what it was as of December, just, 'cause I don't have it right in my hand.
Well, now why should you look for that? This is, this is no tackle, no individual, it's just something that's a matter of fact, y'all. That gasoline taxes always can be used for emergency cave-ins, and anything that happened around the city here regardless of what water was in. And this council, the mayor's people chose to divide it up because we all have major potholes, issues in the war. But as I look at this, this is a big problem, y'all, because that's where the public gathers. And, and y'all have to be some of our treatment without it, and have, has it fallen to this, uh, this cave-in? Obviously, they do the right thing, and this relates to gasoline taxes divided, and this makes sure that there's no more particular issue.
Okay, I think, if I go with Councilwoman Thomas, I mean, Councilman Bowlin first, then Councilwoman Thomas. Uh, I think you have a recommendation that you can, if you like, if this is this way, or if you find it aside.
I didn't know if it was possible, um, Mr. Hall, but if we could, uh, do a contract separately for the, the design and engineering phase, that way we can move forward with that portion, and he can pay it directly, I, and we can get that approved tonight to move forward, and that can come out of, um, special project. In the meantime, if you come back for a council, where the remainder of the contract is executed.
That's okay.
Okay.
Let's put a motion on the floor, feel we have a motion on the floor, just going on the design phase to move forward.
I don't put for, for about fifteen thousand. Fifteen thousand, two hundred.
Yeah, fifteen thousand, two hundred. Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Schott, so does our Councilwoman Jackson for discussing, I think I've seen Councilman Bowlin, Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman Benjamin.
Yeah, the question is, uh, how does this tie into the, the hole in the asphalt there right by the old major rubbles? If you look in that hole, it's a huge cavernous abyss as well. They gotta be connected somehow or another because they're right there together, and it's gotten progressively larger over the years, even though the asphalt hole isn't that big. But the hole itself, if you look down in there, it's pretty large, you just take a tension stick in there.
You're talking about under the brick under.
Under the asphalt right there, as you, as you go up the hump and get into Major, oh, the old parking lot used to be used by Major.
I don't know where you're talking about.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's catty corner, but it's still.
And that's not that far back.
No.
If you look on my drawing, I was, I actually showed my manhole up on top of the, my proposed manhole.
Right.
We may be able to.
I just think it warrants looking into that, because that's gonna fail at some point in the area.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that's it, we get into what our design, we, we'll probably scoot back and, and take that into account.
Okay, of course.
You're correct, that, that pipe, or that brick pipe goes north, heads north, back up parallel with Franklin Street.
Right, it has that weird angle to it.
And I'm pretty sure it drains, a lot of drainage on water out.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Benjamin, then Councilwoman Jackson, call for it.
Yeah, Councilwoman.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, he skipped people, I didn't say.
I know, I didn't say.
He went to Thomas and, oh, I don't mind.
Well, I'm gonna speak mine, I have to say. Gas tax, gas tax is used, uh, for infrastructure, like, when you have a serious problem, which, uh, for the first time I ever used, and I did not use, but fifteen, fifteen thousand, eleven and four thousand, uh, for a major problem in my ward. That was my first time using gas tax since I've been sitting here. And the reason I had to use that, I had no other way to go because all of my funds were gone, and I had to take care of a serious problem in my ward. And that, that is what gas tax is used for.
Alright, thank you. Councilwoman Jackson and Councilman Johnson, right there.
Alright, and we'll stick with a motion on the floor. Um, I wanted to, uh, just offer also, um, and piggyback on what Councilman Schott said concerning we need to take care of this, and, and we should. Now, my thirteen thousand dollars has gone inside of a contract that was voted on tonight for cave-in and potholes. However, we have money on the way, um, in March or April for those, and I would say, um, subtract the, whatever it is, ninety thousand, ninety-five thousand from that before we do anything else, we'd add, I would say to the council, let's consider subtracting that ninety-five thousand, or ninety thousand, whatever the difference is from that. And, uh, of course, the engineer would have to tell us if that's even feasible for him, uh, when the oil lease monies return them in in March or April.
Thank you, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Mr. Thompson, prior to the meeting starting, you actually brought, uh, this up to the council members that are present and discuss, I'm just what Councilman Bowlin stated, that, uh, actually, this hole ran directly into the other hole, and what I want to make sure that's correct, Mr. Hall. And so what you're saying is you're going to take care of both of these in this project?
Oh, I mean, we'll, we'll probably have to extend that pipe back, but if you look on the drawing where you see my show, the round circle at the top, um, it's, it's almost to that. I'm sure what we're gonna do.
I see.
This one's ready, but this one's blank. Look back up here, that's almost, you know, I, I wasn't gonna fix it right where the hole was, but I went downstream from the hole, and then back upstream, I just need to take that back about fifteen or twenty feet.
Can you point to the spot that Councilman Bowlin was, can you point?
It's not on the map.
It's not, it's, it's.
Not on the map.
It doesn't show, but it's, it's right back.
Well, actually, it should be, if that's the parking lot right there, right? So it's right here?
It's right.
So if it was on there, about how many would be pointing this out?
I just want right back like that.
So about how many?
When I do this, if you see my, it's my disposal here, I've got it on either side, I can slide this back to the council.
About fifteen feet?
Fifteen, twenty feet.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Johnson.
I want to make sure that I understand you correctly, you're going to take care of both of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one vote.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one mark.
We'll get bids.
Thank you, so be it.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Ray, now you know how I operate, now that every time you bring something, I want you, and I'm glad you saw that, uh, because I don't believe in spending this amount of money and don't go back a little farther because, and I want to make sure that you, um, the guys that are doing it, that we're not gonna get a good warrant behind this, because we wanna come back and spend a year or two and this cave-in again.
When we do one, you gotta have a, a, on state law, when you do a purpose project, they give you a one-year warranty from the completion.
Now, you also, I think it's on law that I'll tell you, you had a, uh, guys that was able to get a camera to go down there. Now, would you be able to look and make sure that even to the point that Councilman Bowlin's talking about, would we be able to see, make sure that all of them cracks are dealt with? I mean, that, I mean, not, not so much saying dealt with, make sure we got a more major problem.
I know what you're saying.
Because I don't wanna come back, you know?
We can get someone, like, I think, get a camera town in there, uh, we'd have to be creative, but if we, I, we, I could get probably somebody to put one down in there this week, or not tomorrow, maybe next week. And I know what you're saying, because we did that on law, you're correct, we went all the way back up to pass, so I have to come off the state.
Right, that's right.
That was about three years ago, we did that.
That's, also, you know, that is my ward, and I, I'm, I'm agreeing to the Councilman Schott. I haven't had opportunity to use the gas tax money.
I get it, sir.
And I'm, I'm willing to give that up, because I'm hoping we get this done before the twenty ninth of February because of the Jubilee coming up, and you know, there are gonna be a ton of people, gonna be all over, and I think a lot of that event's gonna be taking place in that area. So I'm not sure how long or how soon, uh, we need to be able to secure it. I understand, but we need his bid to secure it, Mr. President, to keep in the balance, child, about the morning.
Now, that you do, and you might want to put up some fence, I'm talking about real fence around that area.
Yeah, even the stairs.
Some chain link fence or something would not be a bad idea.
That's right, but we need you to help us get, whatever we need to do to secure that, because the same deal, like the next month, no issue.
How can I ten thousand off that?
There were thirteen or ten.
Thirteen, but I've already.
Okay, well, I, I, but, but let's say this now, now, when we get some money, I will mine back, because I got a lot of funds that I need to borrow.
I kinda like what my colleague said about how we're gonna find this, I just heard some clarity on it. You indicated that we would take down all this money this year in April of March.
Yeah.
Off the top.
So what source of funds would be paid, admittedly, to get this done and replaced with that all this money? What source of funds?
To replace the ninety-five thousand?
Yeah. Yeah.
I didn't know y'all wanted to. That's, that's why I was. Well, that's a good question. Yeah, that's why we just had to go ahead, in order not to impede the process, let's allow him to go ahead and do the planning and design. Phase one, and then by the next council meeting, I'll have you all some options to vote on, where the money, because maybe there's some other alternatives, and I'm thinking of something, the gentleman right off the top of my head, that you all could still be able to use here, as for within the ward, and we could just use it from a savings other than this, and so allow me that opportunity.
Okay.
We're gonna have to really help, no problem, my colleague, I follow this thing, initially, where's the money coming from?
I have some ideas.
Alright, we have a motion on the floor to move forward with phase one. Who made the motion?
For sure.
Listen, Councilman Schott, so does Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jackson, in the following discussion, roll call.
President Bush, Councilman Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman Jackson. Yes. Councilwoman Benjamin. Yes. Councilwoman Randolph, Councilwoman Schott. Councilwoman Thomas. Yes. Councilman Johnson.
Yes, you've now been spoke to, I'll start on the face.
Okay, I wanna thank Mr. Ray Hall. Uh, my next, um, project, and I'm gonna, uh, continue along, this is another, uh, tourism item in which I'm looking to present the facade right next to the Welcome Center.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm looking to do a project between these two, these two facilities, uh, with an amount not to exceed five thousand dollars for both projects, and my intention is to get both of these done prior to Jubilee, being that that's, uh, prominent times around the city. And we had gotten, um, if you look at the second one, which is inside of the interpretive center, Congresswoman Sewell brought to mention a lot of the, uh, sheetrock inside of the facilities that needs to be replaced and, uh, repaired, and it needs it like immediately. There are also a couple of other cosmetic things that can wait, but the immediate issue is the inside of the facility. There's a baseboard in there next to the door that has some very dark-looking stuff on wood that we want to make sure that we get this taken care of, and I wanna move on it as quickly as possible.
Both in regards to?
Not to exceed five thousand for both, well, it's ten thousand total.
Ten thousand.
Yes, and, and regarding the Kahaba Furniture facade, the wood, the, if, the, if you, if you ever get a chance, and you all get a chance, take a look. The bracing behind that building has collapsed, a couple of the beams have collapsed, and knocked the boards outward, in which one of them eventually is gonna fall into the street if we don't get something done to them.
Which one?
The Kahaba Furniture facade. Yeah, so, um, this, uh, what we're looking to do is we're looking to replace the wood and paint the front of the facility and stabilize the boards that are located behind there.
No, this is ten thousand, ten thousand, you know, it's hundred and fifty thousand, I'll be, I'm gonna go ahead and put a motion on the floor that we move forward with it, have a motion on the floor, so does my Councilman Johnson, now open for it.
Yeah, Mr. President, I, I agree with Mr. Thompson, this, these facades are very adapted to perfect. As a matter of fact, it was probably last year, when some people were walking down the street, they ran out of their pants, one of them, as a matter of fact, one of them just fell down. And then the fellow next to him was about to come down, I thank God, and went out of courage. I was wondering whether the city was gonna deal with this, and stuff like this, and the city's gonna address this, and get this fixed or perfected about the end.
Okay, alright, you had, Councilman Bowlin and Councilwoman Benjamin.
The interpretive center, this, uh, these last two photos or so, that's from the interpretive center inside?
The inside.
At the third floor?
Actually, it looks worse if you see them in color, and I, I ask any of you all, if you all can go in and take a look, as soon as you walk in the building, if you look over to the left hand side coming in the door, it, it needs to be done. We really need to represent our city better than that.
But the question, I guess, since the building has not been, that, it's not that old, it hasn't been that long since renovated, why are we having such substantial problems?
That was a part of the first phase that was done on the building, and like Mr. Hall mentioned, there's about a year to warranty on certain things, but.
Well, still, the quality of construction should be better than the last year, I mean, the guy's just making it go a year that, we don't need to hire them ever again.
Exactly.
This is, this is not on the upper floor, just on the bottom floor?
That's on the bottom floor.
So.
The issue is, when you're dealing with the older building, it's possibly, what, and I got this from another engineer who told me, there's an area where the conjoined buildings, conjoined in between the two, that because of the oldness of the building and the way the spouts are set up, the water some kind of way can run down, and it's condensation, which is causing the inside end, when the sheetrock was put on there, there's a certain kind that, uh, if you use this mildewing mold, can't.
Resistant.
Resistant, but I don't think that was used during that time, so ultimately, it has to be repaired, and not even only on that side, there's also the, the side next to the windows, if you, and get a chance, and you take a look on the outside, there's a small crack along. If you get a chance, and you take a look on the outside, there's a small crack along the edge of the building right beside the brick, if you go through there, you can see where rain or whatever goes down there, and it's not from, the rain is not getting in there, but it seems like it's condensation that is causing the issues that we're having here.
So, is there a plan to repair that issue that's creating the condensation? Because we just put sheet rock up, and we get the same problem in three years, and we're
Well, well, the issue, I think, with the sheet rock was the type that we utilized within that time. And the usage of, uh, different types, as well as what's going to have to happen with that outside, and I did talk to the Goop Mills about what it would take in regards to do that. It's going to have to be a seal around the basement area of the Interpretive Center that's going to be done, and that's going to be a project that we're going to have to find some federal funding to be able to cover the cost for that, because it's going to have to be completely sealed down there. And if any of you all get a chance to go down there, um, you can, uh, you can smell the moisture in the basement of the Interpretive Center, and if you go get a chance, um, go visit that, uh, issue that one of the contractors did tell me, there's a type of humidifier that actually goes into the HVAC that will, uh, help. So I won't say it's going to fix it, but they said it will else, and they're, um, supposed to be giving me some numbers and some information in regards to that as well, which I should have that before Jubilee as well.
Thank you.
Like I said, I'm glad to see you, it's been a while.
Yes.
And because it's been a while, we have something now that needs to be done immediately, and I'm sure it started as a dot that somebody missed, and then the dot got bigger and, and all of those things. Who is in charge of the process of going around? Because I know you're responsible for probably certain Welcome Center, Interpretive Center, I don't know which, which dukes is anymore, but, um, you're responsible for some of that, but who's responsible for finding these things out before they become emergencies and costs us so much money? Like, in this picture, am I seeing mold in picture number three?
Uh, possibly.
The picture you gave, you guys?
Possibly.
Is that mold?
I don't know.
And these are cracks that look like, um, they started small and they became bigger, and now they're noticeable, very noticeable. Um, Congresswoman Sewell sank a lot of money into this, and, uh, she was on the floor for this, writing for this, and we all know how the story started about the Interpretive Centers. And I'm so happy that it finally landed itself, and we gotta, you said, you said something in your statement that we gotta do better because it's not a good representation. You are correct, so what is, what is the problem, and what is the solution, and how can we help?
And we, I've been meeting with the Park Service as well, this is, uh, there are several issues that go along with this one in particular, but ultimately, there should and probably needs to be maintenance plans in place for all buildings.
On this day for, have a maintenance plan for all these buildings?
All buildings need to have maintenance plans in regards to doing that process.
Maintenance plan, you brought a maintenance plan, there should be a maintenance plan, where, can you please pull it? And give us a copy, can you please get with the, uh, with public buildings? And give us a copy of what the maintenance plan is, I'm serious. I know it's funny because all the buildings are falling apart, and it seems so funny, and it's just, sometimes it gets satirical, but I'm serious about it, can you please pull the maintenance plan? And, because we keep coming to the juncture of an emergency, an emergency. And so what is the maintenance plan, like, regular maintenance, but like, I gotta get an oil change right now, I'm negligent on the oil change, I know this because I can look right there, the dashboard.
The Park Service is concerned as well, and that goes, it goes in regards to everything, from the air conditioning to the, I, I know you all have noticed that we're having a lot of HVAC problems over at the Interpretive Center. That is an issue from not having, I don't know how to change features and go over there and do those type of things, but I do know that they, there's a set way that certain things can be done to where it's contingent and put in place to where it can be repaired and taken care of on a consistent basis.
Can you please, uh, work with that on that end, uh, like, you are not open building, but you are planning developing, so all these things should work together, every department should work together, including us, let us know what we can do on our end. The building that was next to, uh, where Phoenix Park is now, there was a building there, remember? And that building was destroying the business next to it because it was connected to it. So it, to not destroy that building, because it took some time for somebody to notice, we had to tear the entire building down to save the antique shop. And you're saying the condensation is coming between the walls and all of those things, and we're at a point where we're going to make a decision on what, I don't know if a basement seal is going to do it.
The Park Service, and we're going to have another meeting with them as well, they have noticed the problem, and they are trying to work to put some funding. They feel we need a project manager for that facility.
For the Interpretive Center?
Yes, but that is kind of a little bigger than just that, so I am working with them consistently in regards to us trying to put things in place to prevent these things. And I know if you all look at the outdoors at the Interpretive Center, there are certain things that we have to have a certain plan in order to do in regards to making sure that we get these things taken care of, but
When you have to meet with the Park Services, you have to invite our public building chair, our representative, uh, Counselor Thomas Johnson, so she can report back to you.
All right, roll call.
President Wood?
Yes.
Counselor Bolin?
Yes.
Counselor Youngblood? Counselor Jackson?
Yes, I'm, I'm going to put this for the record, make sure it's a licensed contract.
No, yes, yes, now, um, let me know if it needs to be state's license, because I would have to add that to the, uh,
Yes.
proposal as well.
It should be.
I'm asking the audience, please get the cord, we're up there trying to conduct business.
Anyone that doesn't have state license, doesn't have a warrant, so in two months, if it's more mold and the sheet rock falls off the wall, we can't do anything about it if it happens the next day. So we want to make sure they're licensed, not the city itself licensed, but an actual licensed professional.
Okay, well, I will add that to the proposal as well.
Excuse me.
And also voids the equipment, because it's not a licensed contractor doing this installation, we're therefore warranties on the building here. So, I'm going to mention this in the report as well. Sorry, the new mic.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph, Counselor LaShaw?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes, and, uh, I want to thank you for coming because, uh, this year on front, on brown, I've seen a lot of people, I've seen some fail too, so I'm glad that, um, you decided to come forward.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes, so, Ms. Thompson, please find someone, we're coming, we need emergency phone, we're going to need some funding fast. All right, Grant's going to be ready.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thompson, who's next?
Okay, lastly, um, is regarding the Wi-Fi project in which I had brought previously, this is regarding the Delta Regional Authority grant and regarding payment of the actual, uh, the contractor for the, uh, project that was started by the Selma Redevelopment Authority and was picked up by the city, and it has currently gotten to the point where it is now. We've received the funding back from Delta Regional Authority regarding the work that has been done, and ultimately, what we need to do is pay the vendor. But being that the contract was agreed between the Selma Redevelopment Authority at that time, it needs to, in order for the city to pay it, we need an approval in order to pay these, these funds out.
Also, uh, Ms. Thompson, if I'm correct, this, um, Wi-Fi grant goes back to 2016?
Yes.
And I know the time is a essence that
It is, it is almost critical, because we have about another forty-five thousand dollars that, um, if we don't spend in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be in threat of losing.
All right, Council members, I know we've been going back and forth with this, uh, Wi-Fi grant, I'm going to go ahead and put a motion on the floor that it moves forward for the payment, because this is jeopardizing the future grant. Have a motion, I put a motion second by Counselor LaShaw and Counselor, Counselor LaShaw. Any other discussion?
Was the account, Mr. President?
It was, uh, thirty-five thousand.
I mean, the account, that the minus one?
Yes, uh, Delta Regional, same, they, it's been paid already, the city has received the funds from the grant.
And you know, city, that's how.
We did.
It was paid from that hand?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Go to make the payment, Delta Regional.
No, he said count, he said count, it's being paid.
Um, I have to check and verify exactly where it was put, but it came into the Selma.
Would you let us know?
Oh, yes.
All right, roll call.
President Wood?
Yes.
Counselor Bolin?
Yes.
Counselor Youngblood? Counselor Jackson?
I'm going to say yes, gradually, because, um, this is something that's done by the SRA, and, um, this funding has been brought to the city, but I say it gradually because we face some issues with this vendor. As, um, well, I don't, I see it's scope of services, but I don't see the contract start date and end date, um, but I'm hopeful, Mr. Thompson, know that all of this has been done because SRA money, actually, that's just being, um, we're just being a vote to or go through, um, um, for the, for their agency. I'm, I'm going to go, yes, gradually, make sure you put all of that into the note.
Good question.
Counselor Benjamin?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph? Counselor LaShaw?
Yes.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes.
Counselor Johnson?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Council members, any other questions for Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, but I asked, why?
Ms. Thompson, just, uh, so, uh, the Barrett Road Drainage Project is moving forward, waiting for the audit to come back in order to get money clarified, get some things figured out there so we can move forward with this, but we can start the bid process once the audit comes back in?
Yes, the design work was completed, uh, two weeks ago, and ultimately, the audit is what we need to secure the funding from AVM.
Okay.
And once that takes place, um, it can be bid.
Okay. And Ms. Wade, you had it where I decided to spend twenty thousand dollars to pay the first two years on that note?
Yes.
The Barrett Road Drainage Project?
I'll, I'll make a note of it.
Yes, ma'am. Something we did at a meeting, I guess, last year sometime, this first came up, to ensure that it was funded the first two years, and as far as loan payments are coming out generally.
Coming after all these?
Correct. Ten thousand dollars per year, is that right?
That's correct.
That's the least we can do to help with our own water problems.
Counselor Thomas, Counselor LaShaw, Counselor
I just want to do a follow-up on the, the brownfield, the landing. Uh, have you got your report back on the, the second phase?
The second phase is, I haven't received any second phases yet, but there have been, they have done yours, Stuart McKenzie, and, um, yes, the motor pool area, they're, uh, in the process of getting that one completed. We just have to get some authorizations on regards to accounting to get that one completed, but they have completed it, and they have the information, they're just doing their due diligence and putting a booklet and manual together in regards to it, and the important portion of that is, once the second phase is complete, and if something is found, or if it's not, we will be eligible for cleanup funding immediately on any project that we're undertaking.
Okay, let me ask you this question, if, if there, hopefully it's not, but, uh, do we have to come up with the matching? Uh, you would have to do a grant for that, we would have to apply for a grant to do that cleanup?
Yes, there, it is competitive, but I think it's seventy, twenty-five, I'll have to confirm the amount on that portion for the cleanup grant, but I do know that, uh, I think so. But I will confirm that, um, but yes, uh, it will be immediately available, and some, there are some circumstances, there is a forgiveness aspect as well, in the, um, speaking with the contracted company that we actually work with in regards to our brownfield, under certain circumstances, there is a forgiveness portion where we may not even have to pay the match.
Yeah, because I just wanted to, um, the press for that, you know, I try to keep that junkyard cleaned up, and, and, uh, she asked me, have you got the, the second phase yet, the reporting, and I told her, I didn't have it. But I will let her know that we, we are in the process.
Yeah, we are working on that, because that's going to be critical keys to the development of all of these areas that we've chosen around the city, because once we, uh, clean them up, and they will be able to be utilized for something within the area.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson, then Counselor Morgan Jackson.
Yes, Ms. Thompson, I want to take this opportunity to thank you for all your hard work. It may seem slow at times, but I know you're working not to lose, trying to get as much resource to our city as possible. I want to take this opportunity to thank you and, uh, Mr. Hendrix, I'm the mayor, for helping get that Flat Street light to back up. I was told that they've got that working, they're trying to get that light, eight six, one six, hopefully that light will be, uh, will be restored, and you may be easy to see and have access to the Flat Street exit off Highway forty-one. So, once I leave here, and I, now that it is dark, I'm going to go by and make sure the light is up, but even if it isn't up, I just want to thank you for being helpful in this, trying to get this resolved, thanks, thank you.
All right, Counselor Morgan Jackson?
Mr. Thompson, speaking of lights, and then I'll tell you why I had my hand up, speaking of lights, though, it's getting darker and darker in the city, and it almost appears that lights are going out in sections, like, frequently, once a week maybe. Uh, can you please find out what might be going on concerning our lightings with, uh, Algonquin Power?
Three lights.
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, lights are going out instead of coming on, if you can find that out. I, I would like to complete our project, you have been working on for a while, to build the market on the corner of, um, First and Franklin, I'd like to complete that, and, uh, if you could help me concerning, uh, the dollars, concerning the fresh fruit marketing, I would appreciate it, and if we could, as soon as possible, meet on that. If you have the time, this week, I'm available up until Thursday, I'm available, I'll be next week. Um, if you have time, if we could go there and, and get that part finished, and thank you for helping me thus far, honey.
You're welcome, and I would, I would like to, uh, for us to get together, I would like to get somebody from the states regarding AVM as well, I, let me make some phone calls, um, and we will see if we can pull that together, because I know it would really help us to kind of get things kicked off, as well as they have funding as well, so maybe to, uh, utilize that as well, because we're actually, the recycling grant is coming up, which we're getting ready to submit on that behalf as well, so I need to call and see what we can get.
We just have to go, we can move.
Yes.
All right, Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, Ms. Thompson, all right, thank you. Um, three and a half years ago, we voted, uh, on the park, which used to be the Selma, the Selma. Um, I'm not sure the council been out there recently, but, uh, you had, uh, some time, and there's a lot of work been done out in that park. Uh, we voted to name the park after the first black bear, which is James Perkins Jr.
Yes.
Um, and I talked with you recently, trying to see how it's coming, uh, could you give it, other council member, the update of what's going on with the park?
Yes, I've spoke with, um, the, uh, the company, the private company that's actually in the process of completing, um, the facade changes on the front, as well as the, uh, other portions regarding rails that's going to be done. They, uh, gave me a timeline of approximately around three to four weeks right now, depending on the weather and a couple of conditions, but everything is But everything is looking well in regards to getting that completed. So, I thank you all. And we are going to come back eventually, though, because of some stabilization issues that I want to get brought to the forefront in regards to that part. But this, initially, we're glad to have all of that stuff getting ready to come to a close. So, it won't be very long now. We will have all of that installed.
The, I think that was an agreement that you will go back up with that structure?
Yes, that's, that's gonna be, that is a part of the other portion as well. And I was kind of wanting to get the initial stuff kind of completed in regards to the pavilion or light thereof that's, um, that's gonna be relocated back within that area and the stabilization of the palace that it sits on in regards to that. And we've been reviewing a lot and we're pretty close to that. But as soon as we get that signage portion completed, we're gonna move step fast on trying to get that executed.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All right, document reports and closing remarks. Councilman Johnson, regulations?
Uh, I don't have no report. Recreation Department of War, then I saw Councilwoman Jackson mentioning about some of, I think you got the track. But right now, I'm not sure you make updates to me on that because I was out on your thing. But now, for, I know that the track is unfit to run on right now. Because we don't want the liability, Selma gave a, you know, called the athletic director and I told them, we don't want the liability responsibility of any child acting on that, on that track and twisting ankle and things because the depth is in bad shape. Uh, I talked to Terry, I met with the contractor out there. He said it's about to be in March before they get off to start researching the track. And it's gonna be rough around fifty thousand dollars. But I told him that we need that in writing. We don't need just what he said. We need it in writing and that way we can sit and go from there. Uh, but baseball season is about to get a bit cranked up real soon. Won't be long. But other than that, my coach from Marcus, boy, they, you know, you know, I understand that, and not just you all, with the garbage, the garbage is coming in into our city from the county area, which I've seen in myself like twice. And I really was hurt by the person I saw dropping the garbage. But we're gonna talk about that on February 18. Have a ward meeting at February 18 on a Tuesday at 5:00 P. M. in Kingston Elementary School. So, I'm asking everybody to plead to attend and the topic will be potholes and garbage. So, if you can, again, we will have a ward meeting on February 18 on Tuesday at 5:00 P. M. in Kingston.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I have a question. Would you please ask those who are responsible for track maintenance, give you the track maintenance plan, please, on the track?
I would do it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good luck.
Say, that's what I'm saying.
Councilman Bowley?
Uh, yes, administrative committee question. Obviously, Major Madison is now our city attorney, so we're gonna have a hold and that department needs to be filled. We're in the serving at the magistrate's office or in the court system.
I'm gonna talk about that.
Okay, so that's gonna be an admin committee responsibility or not. Everybody had a chance to review that document assignment regarding the request for information? Major, I guess you haven't received that because you're new and they probably didn't get forward over to you when we had the transition between the terms.
Oh, I haven't received it.
Okay. I will send you a copy of that. Do you have your contact information?
I do, I do, Councilwoman Bowley, and I'm going to send...
You can have it, Councilwoman Short.
I'm going to send the entire council, my contact information tomorrow. I was in the process of getting my phone and I have an email address and now access to both.
Are you still have the same cell phone number you were at before, sir?
Yes.
Goes all the way back to our Concordia days, working together?
Fifteen years.
Yes. All right, well, I just want to make sure we get a copy of that, see if we can review it, and then we can discuss it so we can get that thing ready to go and get our citizens a easy access. And again, Mr. President, wait to find out if that's gonna be a committee assignment for the administrative committee to deal with that or not. I guess you'll tell us in a moment. Ward one, folks, I'm in the process of trying to find a contractor to work with to get the potholes filled up in our grid area. They are many and plentiful. Mr. Joe was here a minute ago. It looks like somebody carpet-bombed his street. There he is back there. Just terrible thin asphalt, needs to be replaced all the way through. But we'll do the best we can to get those things remedied based on the money we have available to us. The good folks that live off Midland, that has been cleaned up again for the second or third time since I've been elected, and no more than fifteen minutes after it was cleaned, there was trash in the middle of it. So, I don't know what to tell you, folks. If you guys can't police your own area where you live to make sure you aren't dumping trash, then it's hard for me to do the same. Obviously, it's gotta be somebody that's going down that road, so keep your eyes open. If you see somebody, call me and I'll afford it. Or call the police chief, call somebody. Let's get somebody picked up on this situation. If we had our six game cameras we bought and gave to Code Enforcement when we first got elected, we'd be able to do something on that. But those have fallen into the abyss like the city money, employees, and everything else that hasn't been solved in the three years or so that I've been serving. So, that being said, maybe we can get some clarity on all this stuff and move forward. But please, dear God, folks, don't let people throw trash in our ward. Don't let people throw trash in the city. If you see a piece of trash on the ground, even if it's somewhere else, pick it up! I mean, it doesn't take two seconds to pick it up. Just pick it up. I pick it up all the time. I pick it up, pick a bag up, then pick up the other trash, put it in the bag, and throw it away. Just pick it up, folks. Pick it up. It's not somebody else's job. It's your job as a citizen to keep your city clean and to make sure you're marketing your city when tourists come into town or if somebody comes in and wants to do business with us. We can't do business with people outside the community that walk in here and you see trash everywhere. So, pick it up!
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowley. On Tuesday, we will have a public safety committee meeting, Councilwoman Thomas, and I was checking, Councilwoman Youngblood. And one of the issues that we're gonna be discussing is the Minister for Judge position. We're looking at having an energy process like, like we did with the fire chief and police chief. So, if you're interested in getting our nation justice for judge, please email me at corybouyg2012@gmail.com. Again, that's corybouyg2012@gmail.com. And also, we have a resolution for Councilman John Lewis, but I know Councilwoman Youngblood and Councilwoman Randolph is not here tonight. And we definitely want to get their signature. So, we're looking at probably be here probably about next few or before the next week. Okay? Thank you. Councilwoman, cheers to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I want to make sure several times, you know, got the announcement. We're doing interviews to fill the vacancy at Minister's Court. You got the email address?
I don't have it.
We'll pass it to you. We'll make sure you...
Of course. You have my email.
No, I know somebody came and it struck at him when you were making the announcement. He was talking to somebody. We're getting to, no, he's going. Okay, so, the announcements that I made earlier, I will have a date for the eleventh annual Black Man Heel Symposium and the twelfth annual Black History Month, Black History Month celebration. Tonight, Ward Four, the contract was approved for our facelift. I hope that the attorney has a contract with him tonight. I need to, because the contractor, I just saw him come in. I need to get those signatures on there tonight. So, if you would pass that to me. You were only missing President Bowie's signature last night. So, if you would pass that to me, I'm gonna get these signatures while all these people are in place. And Ward Four, look for phase two of our facelift. Uh, phase one was ditches, ditches, ditches. That didn't sound right. It was ditches, 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 and now it's pothole, pothole, pothole. Thank you to the council for the appropriation. I appreciate y'all making that vote. So, getting ready. James, you might want to follow me through Ward Four because it's gonna be so much fun. It's gonna be so much fun. You know the Selma sign, they're gonna be around too. So, y'all follow me through as we do phase two of our Ward Four's facelift. We're done with ditches, we're moving on to potholes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bowley. Councilman Short?
My colleague is called like canyons, canyons.
Canyons, canyons, canyons.
I am glad to see my friend, Mr. James, here from the Sematary Church.
Yes.
And I heard that the animals, so I'm, the weather is on, make sure it's being recovery. As my colleague Samuel, your granddad, Samuel, your friend. But, Mr. James, I hope the Sematary Church will have headlines. The city's silver has not declared war on college tears. Those people who in the spirit take their house on garbage and throws it anywhere they want to, and then they got it receptacle. War has been declared by the city and you're gonna pay the consequences for your disrespectful deeds. So, our city don't deserve this, national. Our city do not deserve the filth that we are experiencing. And it's because of our citizens. And I kind of agree with my colleague over there. Some of these citizens are coming from the county. And he has, he has to put that. So, beware. You're gonna have to be aware of your actions when you just take your household ashes and just spread it. And we're asking citizens to take down car tags, take pictures. We're gonna make sure that those people who dump it and just throw their trash anywhere, it's gonna be dealt with and it's gonna be dealt with harshly. So, with that being said, Mr. President, I do want to thank my colleagues for their support and the rename of Cold Street to Ernest D. Tate. I thank Chief Tate from Selma, Chief Tate, the first African-American chief, deserving of having a street that he gives on, named in his honor. And for that, I just want to thank my colleagues for their support. And what you, if you see, you're not gonna use a sandal or you'll use a car. If you see a car walking down the street at four or five o'clock in the morning with a person, they just flash them to you on the shoulder, call police. Tell them. Because you know he did not go to Walmart or Walmart is closed at twelve o'clock. You know he did not go see him, so as well as seeing his flash frames, you know, learn well that type of night, he got out somebody in the house and they don't know anything. Tell, when you see something, say something. With that being said, he's saying, he has a gun.
Thank you, Councilman.
Now, Councilwoman, you may rate this night. You would rate Councilman Randolph who not, he's a servant listening on the radio. You should have used his name.
Good evening. First, I would like to update Councilman Johnson, as he asks that I do regarding the track. As you said, we didn't get anything in writing. You asked that I speak with Mr. Jackson. I spoke to Mr. Jackson. He couldn't provide me the information that I was up for to contact the person. He didn't have a business card. He didn't have a telephone number. He had a name that I tried to Google, but he didn't even have correct spelling. I just, I couldn't find, find the person. And he hasn't heard back from him. And so, I've contacted several places as far as South Carolina. And I failed to contact one today. I was in court. They contacted me while I was in council meeting last night and left me a text message. Actually, he texts me and asked me to give him a call. And I didn't call him today. But I will follow up with that tomorrow, in the opportunity to try to get an update because the councilwoman has requested something in writing. And so, I would love to get someone out here that can give us something in writing to determine if it's feasible to use the track this year, if it's such deplorable conditions as the previous person stated, that we cannot use them, and what it would take to get it done including a maintenance plan. So, I'm working on trying to get that.
I contact, uh, the city of Tuscaloosa also. So, I'm waiting on the Recreation Director to get back with me as well. So, we're between each other.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
That was just my update. He asked that I update. And to the citizens award, three. We're still working diligently. Thank you for all of you all that came out on the eighteenth. We worked hard on that day. There was a landfill that was placed in the city. This was something that Code Enforcement was working on prior to that apartment being vacated or removed altogether. And so, they were working on this property, on trying to get the garbage picked up. And we were able to go back there and make a substantial dent parrot. It is not where it needs to be. And we can't remove all of the things. We've removed the garbage, but this is a property owner. And so, we, we need Code Enforcement to ensure that we're not infringing on their rights and to make sure that we're doing things properly. Additionally, my number hasn't changed. I give it out. I put it in newspaper. It's on the website, three three four two six seven nine seven three seven. If I don't answer, I'm either in court or on another call. But if I'm in court, wherever I am, I will text and say I'm in court on council meeting as I'm going to several times tonight. Please call me back or allow me to call you back. If you have an issue in Ward Three, please do not hesitate to contact me. I'm working diligently on the lights on Union Street to get them up and running. I have contacted Mr. Carter today and been trying to determine if it's in fact that the city has shut off services to those lights or if the lights are not working because of some type of other electrical problem. So, know that I'm working hard on your pass. Thank you for attending our meeting on the fifteenth, what was it, the eighteenth, on Martin Luther King Day, the day we serve Martin Luther King Day. And thank you for allowing me to serve as your council representative. Thank you to all the council members that allow me the honor of being a leader in Selma City Government with you. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Thomas.
I would like to say to the citizens of Selma, I want to thank you for allowing me to take part in everything I do as a leader of the city of Selma. Because this is our place. This is our home. And we have visitors in. We want our city to strive and look good. We want people to go back and talk about, say good things about Selma. Also, this, the month of February will be a busy month for me as a representative of the city of Selma. Also, we'll be having, February the eleventh is the legislative day, which we know that elected officials should go to Montgomery to the municipal league and meet your representatives. I plan to attend because it's a part of my education training to get to know some of our elected officials and some things that we can talk about and ask for help for our city. Also, come Thursday, I'm so happy Thursday because I want, I want the kids to, my city to be represented. One of our schools, or both of my schools, knocks, are paying to be represented in this contest, which they will pick three posters out of each school and be a part of the other cities that are being in this contest. Because it's good for our kids to take part in this education. It helps our children to see how we can connect with the body of government. Because you get a chance to go to, for KI meeting in Montgomery and get a chance to do other things. So, I'm hoping that that Thursday morning with, we're gonna put in paper with all of the fifth graders that took part in this and President Bowie and whoever the representative is in Payne School will be able, if not one of the other council, will stand to represent Payne School with this. Because it's, it's good for the city of Selma. And also, I really want to thank Morgan Academy for holding up. They have really been good cleaning that stadium up. They do it every Saturday with the group, they're out there every Saturday morning early, seven o'clock going through Block Hall, cleaning trash. And they have made that commitment to the city of Selma that they will continue to do that. And I want to thank them personally. I appreciate what you're doing. You're showing community, leadership. Good job. And good night, city of Selma.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas. Do I have a motion for...
So, move this, President.